We're in a meeting right now that should be ending any second, so just to let you know.
Yeah.
Hello, everybody. Sorry about that. We had a forecasting meeting that ran a little over.
It's all right. We just docked your pay.
Okay. It being about 6:49, I'll call a meeting order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Danny? Second by?
Second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. We have a walk-in period now. Are there any walk-ins here? Mr. Ball?
David. I wanted to update the board on-
Dave, if you can just give your name and address and stuff.
David Ball, 44, Rebecca Rupp, President of the City Historical Society. I just wanted to give the board an update on the work out at the White House. As you recall, last spring, the board signed the contract for the renovation work that was going to take place out there. That was an $85,000 project. $75,000 came from CPC town money and $10,000 came as a donation from the Historical Society. We started the work in July on the storage room, and that was totally rebuilt prior to the first opening for the summer tours. And then we purposely waited until late August to begin the bigger part of the work, which was the rebuilding and the restoration of the utility room. And the utility room is where all the mechanical systems for the lighthouse are located, the heating system, the electrical system, plumbing and that kind of thing. That work was completed in October. As we suspected, in the utility room, the sills were rotted, the electrical wiring was very poor to the point of being scary. The roof was leaking. We took the building interior-wise down to the studs, rebuilt the floor system because that was unsafe, and then started the rebuilding work. We were able to save the original floor and that part of the building. I'm glad to say there was excellent workmanship in all parts of all contractors that were involved in the project. And the reason I wanted to come in tonight is to just let you know, number one, it's done. And it is such a high-profile site. A lot of people were very interested in the whole process, what was going on up there. And the other good news is that the whole project came in somewhere around $9,000 on the budget. And that was in good part due to the efforts of Sean Harris, who's sitting right up there. And the society had been working with Sean for about a year on the design and the planning of the heating system. And Sean told us that he was going to do everything he could to get the boiler and the burner and the indirect hot water heater and the new oil tank donated, which he did. He also donated all of its work as labor to the project, so there was no cost there either. So the only cost for the heating system was plumbing supplies, piping, that kind of thing. So that was a huge help. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone is aware of that as well.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Sounds like you would have been over budget. That sounds like a lot of-
Well, it would have come in right around budget, but it was certainly a big help.
Now, that money goes back to the CPC, is that-
Yeah, whatever's left over will go back to CPC.
Great. Great. And it is all done and completed at this point in time?
Yeah. We have just one more thing, and that's an exterior light to install, but it's a special auto, so hopefully by Christmas.
Any comments, Mr. Dan?
No. Great job. Question the helicopter. Do you know when that's coming, Dave?
I do.
Is that coming the-
It's going to be sometime in the next couple of weeks. I'm not sure the exact day.
Okay. I'll mention it at our next meeting. I'm just curious. Thanks.
Want to elaborate a little bit for-
Sure. Helicopter, Santa comes by helicopter, actually, to the lighthouse keepers. Goes up and down the coast, of which it comes to Situate Light. And usually, it's the Saturday or Sunday, and that's why I was asking, Dave, if Dave might have more information being on Cedar Point.
They always kind of wait till the last one to let us know definitely the time.
It's been going on for over, like, 50 years.
Yep. Does he land and get out?
Yep.
Yes.
Out of helicopter, right there at the lighthouse.
It's all part of the Flying Santa program. It's been going on since 1929. It's really cool.
Actually, it's longer. 80 years. Yeah.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Great, Dave. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Well, yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Sean. That's-
No problem.
Very generous. Okay, move on to the Hawker's Peddler's License. Is there someone here from Ellen DeLuca?
Good evening.
Can you just say your name and your address? We can-
Sure. Ellen DeLuca, to Ritzfield Road Extension.
Great. So you're here to get your Hawker's Peddler's License, the usage of it expanded a little bit in terms of what you're selling?
Right, and a renewal.
And the renewal. Now, the renewals will all happen at the same time for everybody?
Right.
So is this, this is essentially just for the rest of this year?
Well, I, you're not, you're not vending at this time.
No, because it's through till tomorrow.
Right, so she's done with vending. So technically, you are, yes, you are correct. But I would suggest that the board so chooses to amend this license, and then it will be considered actually, well, it will be considered amended license, and it will just go forward into the next year. We don't have to-
Hi. Sean?
Yeah. I just looked at it like maybe she's expanding her menu a little bit. It makes sense to me. We're hearing about it now. She's been doing it all summer. There hasn't been any problems, so if we, it'd be one less. And she might be changing it a little bit, but there won't be any surprises in the spring when she starts up again. I think she's just expanding her menu a little bit, you know, and maybe her hours, but, you know, I think it's nice to hear it a little ahead of time.
Joe?
Yeah, I, you know, I hate to be negative on something like this, but, you know, I'm saying, where you're expanding your license to sell grilled sandwiches, lobster salad rolls, et cetera, and you have a various locations as far as where you'd go with the, with the business. You could go anywhere in town with various locations.
Well, basically, it's Cole Parkway.
Yeah. But here's where I'm getting with this. We're getting closer and closer every time we, and I even see with the farmers market, I see with these people in town paying taxes, and again, this is not, don't take this personal out, you just have to be the one in front of us tonight, to sell sandwiches, to sell grilled sandwiches, to sell. And are we opening up kind of a Pandora's box? Are we opening up a situation where we'll have another Hammerock as we had last year or the year before, with someone being accused of parking outside, right outside the front door? I'm not saying that any means that you would, but I can see something like just developing into that, you know? When you get into the sandwiches and grilled sandwiches, and a lot of places in town sell grilled sandwiches. I don't have a solution for it. I'm just bringing up the problem that I see.
Just one quick comment then, Mr. Murray.
Yeah.
That's kind of what we talked about all last year, and I know that Kim's been working a lot on it, and so was Trish in terms of getting the layout in terms of what we want. And that was my comment that I wrote here. This license is very broad, because like Joe said, it says you can go anywhere. I mean, you may only go to Cole Parkway, but it says that you can go to the athletic fields, town activities, Cole Parkway. So that was my question in terms of passing this one right away before we really look at the work that you've done to say, how many people do we have in Cole Parkway? But I'll, before I chat, Ms. Murray?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Ellen, I just want to echo Sean's point about we didn't hear any complaints or anything at all about what you did last year. And so this is not, as Mr. Norton said, you happen to be sitting here. I share Joe's concerns, and Tony's, the ones you just said as well, which is why I thought, and you sort of alluded to this already, that we were going to be doing all the licenses at sort of one time as opposed to on a rolling basis, so we'd have a better feeling for the whole spread of opportunities and the whole spread of things coming in. I thought that was what we were going to try to do for next year. So my sense, for me, is it's hard for me to vote on this tonight, given the fact that we don't have our understanding yet of locations that you folks are going to be working on, and also, you know, other people might be coming in as well, and we need to see everything's being considered. And returning vendors, at least for me, you know, who have been doing well, you know, have a priority, if you will, or whatever, you know what I'm saying, in that regard. But it's hard for me to deal with this right now, given where we are in the calendar of this as one issue. Then the second issue would be the breadth, as you just articulated. Danny?
Well, Mr. Luca, I certainly could vote on it tonight. However, I think we've seen over the course of the year, and let me tell you a second thing. You know, if it doesn't happen tonight, you'll have a, in my estimation, you'll have a, in my opinion, a Hawker Peddler's License. Did a good job this year. That shouldn't be a problem. But I think the sense of it right now is if, if we're going to have a meeting about where people are going to be located, then we need to do that. I think we're trying to get a sense, because there were a lot of people in the past year who said, hey, I want to do this. And then we ended up having some people who wanted to compete against others. And then we had store shop, or, you know, stores or restaurants or small shops that were saying, hey, I want to sell this. So we kind of have a, you know, be careful about it. One thing, when the lobster salad rolls, I was going to say that the Board of Health makes sure of that, because that's kind of an issue I know Jennifer has to look at. But that being-
Be assured of that.
That being said, I mean, I just don't want you to walk away tonight and say, oh, geez, oh, no. No. Plan on doing it. The people who've done it this past year, I think, should have the first option to do it the coming year. We're going to have to find locations, though, personally. And I think if that doesn't happen, I'm not going to, you're the first one, so I can tell you this, and I'll give you my assurance, that I don't think this board should vote on anything until we have an idea in place. So you'd be the first one. If somebody comes in and says, I want another Hawker Peddler's License at your location or this or that, my opinion is that's not going to happen until we get a sense of it, so that you're not going to be out, since you're the first one, you know, so to speak, to be before us. But, so I would probably say, hold on, wait until we have a meeting. If we're going to have one, we're going to go into the budgets, which gets us pretty busy. But between now and, let's say, March, we need to kind of get a sense of what we're going to do. And I know there was supposed to be a plan in place that we're going to be looking at. If not, then I think we should have everybody in. You'd be the very first one, and I'd say, where is it that you want to go? Because you're the first one to come before us. So that would be my position.
As far as the grilled sandwiches, the main reason why I was, I was bringing that up is because I've had a lot of vegetarians approach my cart during the course of the summer. Couples. The girlfriend is vegetarian. She doesn't do hot dogs. She doesn't do sausages. You know, so I was just thinking, just to be able to, to keep that sale, you know? I mean, instead, she walks away with a bag of potato chips or a pickle. I mean, you know, she's not really happy about it, and the boyfriend gets to eat. The lobster salad roll, basically because of the lobster men that are all down at the back, backed up there. Like, why aren't you selling lobster salad? You know? It's kind of like one of those things. We, I get a lot of the people from the marina that question and me, like, because I can't do it. It's not part of my license. Well, why don't you make sure that it's on your license for next year? I said, I'll do my best.
Thanks. One second. Mr. Harris, did you?
Let Rick go first. All right.
Go ahead, Sean.
This is exactly what we want to see in town. They've been taxpayers for, how old are you, Kevin? 60? So they're from town. He's been a local fisherman. Ellen's proved herself. I don't know what else I can say. I've seen her out there last summer. If there is some overlap, and the restaurants do a better job than Ellen, then Ellen won't be there the next year. I can see what you're saying a little bit. Maybe you might want to limit or know where she is, so you don't have a real lot of overlapping if she went to the fields and so forth. But this is exactly the type of operation you want to see, you know? You know, a model of it. So I can't vote for it tonight, and, you know?
I had actually a lot of people over the past two months come up to me and ask me, are you coming back next year? You know? And they, they were really sincere, you know, in the fact that they wanted to see me back. They're like, did you have a good enough season-
To come back?
To make it worthwhile? And I'm like, well, I'm still proving myself, you know? The word's still getting out, and September and October were much better than early back at the summer. I had a lot of comments saying that if anybody deserves it, you should, because you've been here through just about every type of weather we've had, you know, 40 mile an hour winds, and everything's blowing off the cart and everything else, and you're chasing it around the parking lot.
There's no doubt. We haven't had any complaints about it, so-
Right, you know?
It's more location-wise, but Rick, did you have?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. I mean, Sean, I agree with you, and I was a customer several times down there, and, you know, the food product was great and all that sort of stuff. But, you know, what we were talking about earlier, about putting these all roughly the same time, I do want to make sure, though, that we do these early enough in our calendar so the potential vendors can capitalize accordingly, so they can plan accordingly. We don't want to be making our decisions in, I'm not sure when in calendar we'd be able to, have to, but in May, or June, or even April, because that's too late for people to plan.
Right.
So if we, if we could do this in, you know, January, late January, February, I know budget season, all that sort of stuff, but sooner rather than later to help out the vendors. And again, Sean, I completely agree with you about this particular one, but I'm looking more at the overall process side of things.
Joe?
Just a comment. I want to make this really clear. This is not about you. It's not about your operation at all, in my mind. It's strictly about the policy. We ran into problems two years ago, where we voted on a very similar situation over in Hammerock, and we came back later on, six months later, to rue the day that we voted it so early. And we, in the location, we just didn't give it honestly enough thought at the time. We thought it was routine, and it turned out to be not very routine. You know, you could add, someone could come in next week and add pizza to it, and then sell pizza, where we have two or three pizza places right down to the harbor. And that's what we're trying to avoid, even though, as I say, this has nothing to do with your operation, in my mind. So that's all I want to say, Mr. Jim.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is this isn't new. You just happened to come in tonight. Kim's been working on this for months, and Tricia has too. So at some point, we're going to have a master plan for the town that says there's going to be two vendors at Cole Parkway, one at Green Bush, one at Sand Hills, one wherever, whatever we think the best layout is. And then your scope of where you can go may be declined, but not the fact that you vend. So if you're at Cole Parkway, you may be one of the vendors at Cole Parkway, but you may not have the opportunity to go to wherever, Central, you know, Central Fields or something like that. I think that's what my-
Yeah.
-impression of the layout, because we've had so many applications come in in the last year, and there's just, you know, we don't even have a good grasp if we're at capacity or not at capacity. And that's what we're trying to get our arms around before we start saying, yeah, you can go there, and you can go there, because you may have someone parked right next to you selling the same things as you are. So that's why we have to get the licenses down in terms of-
And I believe that you've been inundated, because there wasn't a week that went by all season that I wasn't getting questioned.
Right.
What do you have to do? How do you go about it?
Right. And, so that's, that's what we have to do, and make a policy for it. So, Rick, just to wrap it up?
Just a final point. The flip side of the coin on this is also that, once we establish numbers of vendors and where and locations, and if you're selected as one, that also ends up protecting you, because then you know, we've already decided what vendors are going to be there. You'll have the reassurance, then, that a month from now, we're not going to reopen it up again and flood your area with, you know, five more vendors. So it'll, it'll help planning from the town side and also from the vendor side.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then, well, if, if you haven't decided on what the scope of the Hawker Peddler's License would be by, like, let's say, March, which I don't really know, Kim and I discussed this, like, on the St. Patrick's Day Parade, if I was to approach Ed Kelly in regards to being a vendor, because he had asked me last year, but I hadn't had all my clearance with the Board of Health, I couldn't do it. But if I don't have, I mean, would that fall under the state Hawker Peddler, which I hold? I mean, how do I go about that? And I've also been approached for a thing that's going on at the community center for March. So, I mean, how do I, how do I handle that?
I think that special events are going to be different than just regular order of operation. You know, for instance, Heritage Days is a prime example, where many more vendors come to town than, than we give license to.
Do you have a state, did you say?
I do.
So-
That supersedes.
Typically, for St. Patrick's Day Parade-
That's another good example.
We don't, we don't do any one-day Hawker Peddler license for that. People have to be licensed under the state, and they sell it up one day. That, yes, you wouldn't come under that. That'd be fine.
No, that you wouldn't have to-
Nobody needs to give you permission.
Right.
If you have a state license, you can show up. Nobody can keep you from peddling.
That's right.
Okay. And what about the community center?
That's entirely different.
That's entirely different.
Entirely different than that over-
You'll need your Hawker Peddler's License in order to do that.
For the town.
For the town. Correct.
No, what I'm saying is, she could have a Hawker Peddler's License, but if there's an event at the community center, there's an event at the community center-
And that would be like a private?
Yeah. It has to go through the special events application.
So let me ask you this. If she's outside of the building, though, she has a Hawker Peddler's License, she would be able to hawk. But if she's inside, then you'd have to have something special?
Not necessarily.
Because it's private property, right?
Right. It's private property, and we need control of the driveway. She'd have no place to set up.
But if we re, Tony?
Yeah.
If we renew as it exists now, she, you know, we're going to, I think Rick or someone, we're going to discuss this in January. By March, she should be all set, if that's her concern.
I would hope so.
Right.
But I think we changed topics from regular operations to special events.
Special events.
So if you, let's say you get one of the licenses on Cole Parkway, and then there's an event at the community center, then you would come before looking for a special one-day event to go to the community center, and that would be assessed on those merits.
All right. Because the gentleman that had approached me, he said that he already has the clearance for the food and everything. So, I mean, do I-
Talk to who-
I don't know the circumstances.
Talk to that person and find out. That's what I would suggest here.
You'd prove the person at the location, so that doesn't open it up to any Hawker and Peddler that wants to show up. That's the common condition.
Good. So I think you should leave this feeling confident that you're going to have a vendor license somewhere, and that we haven't quite sorted out what the matrix is going to look like. So positive.
All right.
Okay?
Good mention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it's 7:15, and we have scheduled a public hearing for an alleged liquor license violation, which we have to go to right now. Is there any, do I have to read the?
So we're going to skip item four and five to get to this item six.
We'll come back, we'll come back to that after this.
Okay.
If they're here. I think they're out in the hall. Al, do you want to? Bear with me for one second. Okay, so we're, we are holding the public hearing now for, like I said, the alleged liquor license violation. And we have some witnesses here. Do I swear them individually as they speak, or all at once now?
We do all at once.
Okay, so why don't we do it? Who is, who is going to be speaking tonight? I know Detective Stewart's going to be. Anyone else from the police?
No.
Okay. And if anyone else does, we can swear them into it later. And the two of you?
Uh, yeah, probably me.
Great. Can you just say your names and addresses real quick?
Brian Gilman, the owner of the Texas-
Jack.
Okay. So if you can stand to be sworn in, please? Do you swear, do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you will give at this hearing is the complete truth?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Great. So why don't we start with Detective Stewart?
Yeah, I'm going to give a synopsis of what took place that night. On Saturday, August 6, 2011, Detective Bob Rappold and Special Officer Brendan McCauley performed alcohol compliance checks of drinking and selling establishments in the town of Sedgwick. The cooperative was a 20-year-old white male. The operation was run such that at strictly selling establishments, the cooperator entered the store. He would retrieve a six-pack of beer and approach the cashier. The cooperator was not allowed to present any identification if he was asked, nor was he allowed to verbally convince the cashier that his age was 21. If asked for identification, he was told to politely say he did not have one and leave the store. At approximately 8:05 PM, the cooperator entered Tedeschi's Food Mart at 337 Gannett Road and purchased a six-pack of beer without being asked for identification. Once the cooperator was outside of the establishment, the alcohol was secured as evidence, and Officer McCauley re-entered the store, identified the cashier, and explained to the cashier that he had just sold to a miner. In this case, the cashier acknowledged that he did not card the subject.
And many documents that he sent in, as well as, you know, your establishment wasn't the only one that was done that night. There were about 20 or so that were done. And again, all the police reports, and I think some documentation from you as well, in terms of your policies, and a letter, a letter from you as well. So before we go in, why don't I give you guys the opportunity to, to talk? I mean, I, or you can read your letter if you'd like, or whatever you'd like, before we start going through the-
The letter was just for you guys. I mean, we don't deny anything. We saw it. We have surveillance. We saw the incident happen, and we had a strict policy in place, and we just had a cashier that didn't follow our policy. And you guys saw our policy. It was strict. All my help, they really do a good job. And we control group sales. They're all tip-certified. The cashier in question's tip-certified. He just didn't do it. And in the letter on our surveillance, we saw 10 minutes later, a kid that was older than the police's subject try buying cigarettes. And our cashier carded this kid that was older for cigarettes. So his mind just wasn't, wasn't there. I don't know how to explain what happened that night. I mean, we fired him right away. He didn't work another shift after that day. We immediately changed our policy. You guys saw that. Now we card every single person, no matter what. We, every bit of alcohol that goes out of our store, if it's a 90-year-old woman, she gets carded. If she doesn't have a valid ID that's not expired, it doesn't go out. We're just at your mercy and hope you consider that. I mean, we really work hard and work a lot, and we do surveillance from home. My surveillance system is tied to my computer at home. You know, we check things.
I'll start and then open it up to you guys, but I can't emphasize enough how important and how of an important issue this is to the town. I remember when you guys came in and got the establishment, and we spoke to you firsthand, because the previous owners had a violation as well, how important this was. My concern, as I'm sure the rest of the board is, is that you had a violation back in May as well from the ABCC.
Same cashier.
Right. Same, I don't know if it was the same cashier or not, but, but same establishment. And, you know, these are just two times when they happen to be caught. You know, who knows how many other times when they may have or may not have. So, so clearly, there's a problem. And, and, you know, we've got, we do- So, so clearly, there's a problem, and, and, you know, we've got, we do take it seriously, we have to take it seriously. And, you know, we've got some guidelines that we can look at to follow, but we'll, we'll discuss what the penalties are tonight. But I, I can't emphasize, you know, the management of the establishment is your responsibility. And if you can't keep your employees from serving minors beer, then you won't have a liquor license in this town.
And I understand that. If I could just say something, I mean, we, we understand the importance of it, and we've done our own, we've since, we have helped to have, like, kids that are twenty years old that we've sent in ourselves. And we had, Tedeschi's corporate had a program with the buyers, program it's called. It was a company that would go around and do, they would send a twenty-year-old in. We would sting ourselves, pretty much, trying to, and we never had a violation. And, and I understand, like, obviously, the, the time that we got caught, you know, it's ignorant to say it's probably the only time, but I think our problem is gone, we fired him. I, I don't think it's my employees, I think it was an employee who was, who we got rid of.
And also, we do know the importance, like I wrote in the letter, the end result is the same. We go after minors that steal, you can ask them, we call, we press charges, 'cause we don't want that. You know, we've lost a lot of business by changing our policy, but that's gonna stay, because we don't wanna risk that either. You know, not just for license sake, but for a minor getting it, you know?
Plus, it's a law.
Yeah, and we all want the same thing, you know?
Mr. Danny?
Gilmet, is that, okay. I appreciate you coming in and basically being contrite about the whole situation. And, and I mean that sincerely, because sometimes people come in and they'll say, oh, we'll fight it, or we'll try to do something. So, obviously, to me, that, that means an awful lot. And I mean that in all, you know, in truth. The difficulty I have, and this is the difficulty I have, is that obviously, there's been a violation recently. There was a violation a year ago, and then there was a violation prior to your taking over the store, which I understand was not your responsibility. But, from this town's perspective, you know, there seems to be probably, maybe the scuttlebutt, you know, the, the, the word on the street is, you can go to Tedeschi's and get beer. So, now it's upon you, and that's what I'm, I remember, 'cause I was sitting in this chair when Mr. Vignani said, you know, you're taking over the store, make sure you're gonna be very vigilant and tough on what's gonna happen. And unfortunately, it didn't happen. And I understand, you know, you can't control the employees, if you tell them, you put them through the training, you, you know, you expect them to do it, they fail to do it, they could really actually hurt your business. But you own the business or you manage the business, so now you have to take those precautions, I understand you have. So, the problem that I'm looking at is, is the problem that now, your store has been marked. Not just as your store, there have been other stores or other retail outlets have done the same. And we've been very hard on them, and they've complied. What I like to see is, obviously, you know, you, you've got like, almost like a no-tolerance policy, saying, okay, going forward, this is the way it's going to be. If it means it's gonna hurt your business, great, because you know what, in the long term, it's gonna help your business. 'Cause people are gonna say, fine, you're respectable, you're making sure this doesn't happen, people go there. Kids, teenagers, whatever you wanna say, they know that this is not an easy mark, they're not gonna go in and do it. But, we're still stuck with a problem right now, and, and, and that's where I'm looking at it. And I say that because there have been other places that we have actually put on probation, so to speak. And we certainly have suspended for a day or two or three operation, to basically say, I know that hurts financially, this is not the time to do it, but we need to make sure that you understand that going forward. And I know that you've, coming in here, contrite, saying, you know, we're taking precautions to try to absorb that. But I, I, my position is that, you know, we have to demonstrate that, 'cause it's not just fair to the people, we've done it before, it's for the next violator. And it may not be you, I hope it won't be, but if there is another violator, we're gonna do it to that establishment equally. Because the problem in this town, as we have demonstrated, as we have seen in the past, is that this town has a problem with underage drinking. And we cannot condone it, and we can't say to you folks, well, we'll let it go by, because guess what? Of the situation, we are the, the, you know, the liquor providers who give you the license. So, you know, I, I have to tell you, I mean, I'm very happy that you didn't come in here and try to contest it. That means an awful lot. But I think you have to understand that, you know, my position is, yeah, you're gonna go for a few days without being able to sell liquor. And, you know, that's the way I'm looking at it, I have a suggestion, but I'll let other board members talk. But that's the reason why, I think you have to understand that, you know, we need to make sure that any kid in town, any teenager in town, isn't gonna say, we're gonna go up to North Situate and get some beer. And just like any other establishment, like we've done in the harbor and elsewhere. So, again, that's, that's my position on it.
Mr. Murray?
Just so you're aware, and people watching, and, you know, there's, there's obviously a two-step process here. Okay, the first step of the process is to find or not find whether a violation occurred. And then, we can discuss penalty if a finding is found. Sorry for the verbiage there. As I understand it, you are not denying that the violation occurred, and you in fact admit that the violation occurred, is that correct?
Yeah, we saw it ourselves.
So, I would like to then, as only the first part of this process, move that the board of selectmen vote to find that a liquor license violation occurred on August sixth, two thousand and eleven, at Tedeschi's Food Mart, three thirty-seven Gannett Road, North Situate.
Before that, we voted on that, I have no problem with that, I'd just like to say something initially before we vote on that.
Sure.
That's all right.
Yeah, because then, then we will discuss penalty.
Okay. I tell you, why, can we get a second on that, and then we'll have further discussion?
Joe, or myself?
Second by Mr. Harris? Okay, further discussion?
My only comments are, we, we know that there is no one in Situate selling alcohol who deliberately will put their, their license on the line to sell to a minor. I mean, it's not that important to, to you, to sell a six-pack of beer, or to any other establishment that we know of, that, you know, we, we have good people running our liquor stores and our package stores. However, having said that, things happen, and they are responsibility or the responsibility of whoever happens to, to own that establishment. And that's what I wanted, I wanted to say, you know, we, we realize that no one is out there in the town deliberately selling, selling to minors. That's happened in the past, in other towns that we all know about, but it, it hasn't happened here in a long time. And we recognize that, so, we recognize that it was not deliberate act on your part, a calculated act on your part. It was something that happened. However, there are consequences, as you know, that come with that, so, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Harris, do you wanna say something before we vote on that?
No, I'll wait until after.
So, we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor of, what was the correct wording, just finding of the violation occurred? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? So, it's unanimous that a violation has occurred, in our opinion?
Okay, if I may continue?
Yes, Mr. Murray?
My thoughts regarding, so now, we're gonna move into discussion of a penalty, if, if any, depending on, on the board. I have sort of a clarification question, as sort of a lead-up. As Mr. Danny and several other selectmen observed, there was on May twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten, another violation that was documented to have occurred. And we have a, we, we came up with some penalty, which I forget what we came up with. But more importantly than that, because they would supersede us, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission ruled that, based on the evidence presented to them, that the ABCC found a violation as well, and they suspended the license for three days, of which three days will be held in abeyance for a period of two years, provided no further violations of chapter one thirty-eight or the commission regs occur. We are clearly, if I'm doing the math right, within that two-year window. That two-year window would end May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve. So, we are still within that two-year window. So, the question I have procedurally is, will the ABCC, not us, but will the ABCC automatically suspend this license for three days? That's part one of my question. This is to either Tricia, I guess to Tricia, or Kim, but I don't wanna put you on the spot necessarily. So, question one is, is there three days automatically gonna happen? And is that three-day suspension tied to the previous event? And if so, are we allowed then to add a separate suspension due to this violation, which they just admitted to? Or maybe you could answer this?
I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you my prowess, I'll give you my, I'll give you my prowess, okay? First and foremost, the ABC is independent, is independent of what our decision is. And in all probability, if there's a violation, then it gets tracked to them, they will probably then invoke their three-day suspension. So, that's gonna take separate apart, if and when it does.
That's separate.
This is not a concurrent. We could, if your board wants to, run any suspension we have concurrently with theirs, or we don't have to. I think that was your second question.
Yes.
But we, our decision, whatever we make tonight, is independent of the ABCC.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't specifically call you, because I didn't want to take advantage of your expertise in this context. So, okay, that, that's good. Now, along those lines, I will go back to the regular board discussion, but my feeling is, is, as articulated by Mr. Danny earlier, I think we need to definitely deal with this with some additional suspension, which we should discuss.
Yeah, and the only thing I'd add to that, Rick, is that the ABCC would come in with a, a penalty for the second offense of, just let's say it was three days again, and they would add their three days to it.
Yeah, so it is really truly separate.
Right.
The message I'm hearing is separate.
It sounds like there's a three-day suspension coming in from the ABCC regardless of, plus whatever their...
Okay, regardless, and that's, so this is all tied to the past. And so, we can now then are free and clear, if you will, to discuss this current...
The reason why I say the ABC is independent, because they may or may not. If they invoke the three-day, which, let's assume they do, which they probably will, it doesn't mean that this violation in and of itself is gonna result in the penalty for the ABCC.
Correct.
Because the sport will probably, the board is going to come down with a penalty. So, they might say, we, we serve them for the penalty that we ended up finding them in violation. You've done it yourself, so why would we need to do a second?
Just as a point of...
Only if they appeal.
Right.
Only if they appeal, and just as a, as a point of information, I don't ever remember the ABC adding to the penalty that we, as a board, handed down, ever. Ever. Ever, they never did it. Whatever penalty, the only thing the ABC might do is if they consider the, the penalty excessive, they may cut it down a day or two, but they'd never add to it.
Yeah.
They never have added to it, added to it, that's all.
Thanks. Mr. Harris?
That's what I was gonna ask, if we just decided to do something that was too harsh, they could, they can alter it, they have the ultimate say. They could appeal, they could appeal to the ABCC. And I was just gonna make a comment early, I'll just make it now. You guys had bought this business with, knowing, you know, there was a violation in the past. It's, comes with a lot of risk by taking on this beer and wine license. It's not like you're out of business, you're in the, really, the grocery food business. And it's, a lot of people have come before us wanting either a pouring license or to sell, and they think, they think it might be their ticket to the lottery to, to, you know, for this great windfall in it. And as you guys have found out, it's probably not the case. It just comes with a lot of consequences and a lot of headaches, you know? I just, I just had to say that, that's really, you know, it's just, you guys have said everything that, I don't wanna repeat what you've said, but that's the only thing I wanted to add.
I, I think, just two other points I wanna bring up. First of all, this is kind of a, a lower-key conversation, because nothing happened, nothing tragic happened. You know, Detective Stewart can attest to it, over the last ten years, there's been way too many things happening to minors drinking in this town. And we all know that minors try and get alcohol before they're legally able to. So, you know, we're just very, very fortunate that nothing happened to the person that purchased the alcohol, or that would've purchased the alcohol. If we went by our, I mean, back in two thousand and five, we have these guidelines that we put together. And that's all they are, they're guidelines. Right now, Mr. Danny and I are trying to, with Chief Stewart, are trying to come up with a formal policy for this. But just so you can understand what it, what these guidelines are, it says, a sale to the, to a minor without ID. The first offense is a five-day suspension of your license. The second offense is a thirty-day suspension of your license. And the third offense is, your license is revoked. So, this is your second offense. The ABCC did the first offense by themselves and didn't involve the town, which is something that we're, I've talked to the chief about today. You know, somehow, we've gotta get in the loop of when the ABC does their stings, and they find a violation, so that the town is, is up to speed on that. I think we got a letter months after the fact, and weren't really, you know, tied in as closely to that. So, these are the, the guidelines that we're using now to look at, are anywhere from zero to, you know, according to this guideline, will be a thirty-day suspension of your license. I, I feel pretty confident saying that the third offense, the revoking of the license, is probably gonna be very heavily considered if this happens again. It's, you know, as, as Mr. Danny said, you know, this is kind of fair warning, that if, if this occurs again, there's probably a pretty good chance that you're gonna lose your license. You know, now, what we have to do is, is, you know, figure out what we feel the, the appropriate penalty is for this, this second offense that you're having. And as we've all said, I think we're being pretty sympathetic. We know what the industry is, we know you can't be in the store seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, to be the person carding them. But somehow, you've gotta get the right people in place that are doing this, because, as Mr. Danny said, you know, your establishment may be the place that teenagers say, if you go on Tuesday night, you can get a six-pack. So, anyways, I know, before we, we have any suggestions of the penalty, I think, Mr. Murray, did you have something else to say?
No, I'm all set, you guys have said it.
So, does, well, why don't we, I can either ask for a motion, or we can discuss, or I can, actually, I have to ask for a motion. So, does anyone have an opinion on what?
In order to get it started, get it started, it has to start somewhere. I move a five-day suspension of the liquor license.
I'll second that, for discussion. Yes?
Which, any particular dates?
To be determined, I, you know, I think five days, and we could, if, if five days are voted, or we could determine the dates afterwards, unless you wanna change it.
I believe it needs to be in the motion.
Oh, it would, okay.
Yeah, I just, we can just... Yeah, I'm with you on the five days, so I just was, we're still on the board discussion-only phase of this, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Five days, uh...
'Cause there's a big difference between Monday to Friday versus, say, Wednesday to Sunday, just for example.
I, I don't have any suggested days, I, I would think they probably wanna get it done sooner or later. December tenth to fifteenth, I mean, that's, you, five days, I don't know if that's good or bad, or...
Find out which days those are.
I was just gonna suggest sooner rather than later for the holidays, or after January first.
I don't, I don't think, I mean, sorry, are you done?
No, yes.
I don't mean to be the hard guy here, but we're not really trying to be convenient, for, you know, this is a serious violation, I think five days is not enough, personally. You know, our guidelines say thirty. Thirty may be a little heavy, but five, in my opinion, is a little light. And we can discuss, I mean, I, I think that, I think that the ABCC is gonna tack on those three days at the end of it, and I would, I would hope that they would, if we, if we only do a five-day violation. But, you know, maybe it's a full week, so we don't wanna get, you know, you know, Monday through Thursday, or whatever the time period is. I mean, I, I think that that's a, a little lenient, personally.
My five days is just to get it on the table, maybe we can go...
They also don't have to be consecutive days.
Good point.
That's a good point.
They can be five Saturdays.
That's a good point.
I was just gonna make a point, but I'm glad you brought it up. You know, no matter what it is, the next time, it's gonna probably be a lot worse. So, I'm glad you mentioned it.
You know, I'll tell you, here's what I would suggest, I'd say seven days, one full week, starting immediately. Otherwise, I'd certainly be happy to incline and say, fine, take the next five Saturdays. Say, you know, either one way or the other, you know, you're gonna hit it, it's gonna hit you in the pocket, realize that, but, you know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be felt, so that, you know, it doesn't happen again, one or the other. So, I'd, I'd be inclined to say either seven days, one full week, you know, commencing, if you wanna do it Monday, I don't care, Sunday to, next Sunday to Sun, or Saturday. The third, or the fourth through the tenth, or the next five Saturdays in a row.
Mr. Murray?
I'm still digesting the conversation.
Take some Ex-Lax.
I would say, I would say...
All right, well, seeing as I just had dinner at McDonald's, then, I will, I will, sufficient prodding by Mr. Danny, which I appreciate. I, I like the five Fridays or five Saturdays, or a seven-day. I am sensitive to the... five Saturdays, or a seven day. I am sensitive to the fact that you folks are working really, really hard on this, and you're seeing it, and we're seeing it, and I, as Mr. Norton said, this is certainly unintentional. But, you know, nonetheless, what I was a little troubled by is the conversation where this is the same clerk who had the problem earlier. And that's on my mind here. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Yeah, we gave them the benefit of the doubt because...
I appreciate that.
...they weren't trained, so that's what we sent everybody.
Sure. You guys are, you guys are nice people. You're trying to do the right thing. You're trying to help a guy, all that sort of stuff, so...
I'll tell you what, before we...
You know, so I'm, but just to follow, I, I like, I like Mr. Danny's suggestion of seven right away, which would, I understand, Tony, your point about this is us not wanting to make things necessarily easy, but I would like to get this out of the way before the holidays. So, either a week starting right away, which would include a full weekend, or maybe even Saturday to Saturday. So there's, there's two in there, something like that. Or five consecutive Saturdays.
How about a motion?
I'll tell you what, before we make a motion...
There's a motion in a second, so...
Yeah, you know, I'd like to, can we, how do we retract that motion?
Someone, I'll retract my motion. Who made the second?
I did, sure.
John, retract the second.
Before we do that, let's give them an opportunity to talk.
Sure.
And then we'll, and anybody else, and then we'll, we'll go from there and wrap this up. So, the mic is yours, if you have any...
I really don't have anything to add. I mean, I, I see everyone's side. I mean, we don't want to sell the miners, or anything like that. The only thing, when I was here, applying for our application back in September 2009, there was two stores in front of us, in front of you, that had sold for a second time, and they've all served one day. They had a one-day suspension with probation behind it. So I'm just looking at our, our second offense, and, I mean, you guys, you know, over here in 30 days, seven days, five days, that's all I'm comparing to, is what I witnessed myself back in September of 2009.
The only thing I'd respond to that is, is the time period between your two events, and, that won't be funny. You know, that, that happened, one of the issues, and the establishment was in, I think, one of the ones was, was the market, Village Market. And I think we missed the ball on that one. But, but anyways, that's not the tenure of the, of the board right now, as you can tell. And I think, regardless, if it goes to the ABCC, you've got three days, you know, if you get lucky and they don't give you anything else. So...
I think we're just confused by the guidelines, like, because we never saw them, and you said 2005, so we were just kind of thinking one thing, not knowing.
I, I don't know that that's true, because I know, as Mr. Danny mentioned a second ago, you came right on the heels of a violation, and we were pretty adamant about what these were.
I just think days-wise, like, we didn't, we weren't really sure what to expect other than what we saw on paper.
Before, I didn't know if Detective Stewart had anything to say, not, you don't have to say anything, but is, is there any other feedback before we go through the board and finalize this, or the chief?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I just want to answer that point. This board has the right to change its policies whenever we wish. And, you know, there's certainly a feeling in town that we need to do a better job as a board, and a better job as a town. Police have been doing a very, very good job with this. We asked them several years ago to institute regular checkups, which they've been doing. And it used to be that a number of establishments received warnings at first. And now, of the X number, I forget what it was, over 20 establishments on these blind or anonymous checks that they did, you were the only folks caught.
We saw that.
Yeah, so, the town is stepping it up. So what happened in the past, in terms of our, our policies in 2009, whether they apply or not, it's irrelevant, because we're moving into a new era where we need to do a better job, and I think the board has suggested that. So that's, that's why.
I have a question.
I understand. So, I know, I completely understand where you're coming from.
Kind of going into the unknown.
Absolutely right. And, but in, in the interest of, you know, open disclosure and fair commentary, you guys have been very open, and we're being very open as well.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Want a motion?
Please.
Joe?
Yes.
In terms of setting a date, I believe I'm correct in saying that when the commits, receive their letter, whatever your vote is tonight, they have within five days to appeal to the ABCC. So I just would ask that you set your dates in accordance with their, they shouldn't be receiving their letter, you know, tomorrow or the next day. I just want you to...
Maybe, maybe we could ask right now, do you have an intention of appealing this?
That's one number we don't know what that says. We'll ask him that.
We'll ask you that afterwards.
We'll second the motion.
I mean, that would...
Well, let me ask you this, Kim. Even if they do, assume for the sake of argument, with all due respect, there is an appeal. Ultimately, it's going to be handed back down to us, then we have to reapply, because I remember that happening in another situation. So, I mean, I think, I, I hear that, and if that happens, it happens, and it depends on whatever comes back down, so.
If they, if they appeal suspended, they don't have to serve until...
Yeah, it's hearing, yeah.
Yes, yes. So here's, here's my thought. I'd like to propose a motion, okay? I'll move that the board of selectmen vote to suspend the retail wine and malt beverage license held by JBNJ Foods, Inc., doing business as Tedeschi's Number 359 at 337 Gannett Road, North Situate, for a period of seven days, commencing on December 4th, 2011, and ending at the end of business on December 10th, Saturday, December 10th, 2011.
December 4th, I believe, is before five days are up from now. Isn't it the 29th? Right, so, one, two, three, four...
Well, let me, I'll get to that. Just, here's my reason for it.
Just want to make sure I understand.
Just, we'll start on the 4th and end on, it'll go through the 10th of December. It's a seven-day period. Now, if they decide, if there's, my reason for it is this. If you decide to appeal it, so be it. Doesn't matter what date I pick, but I'm just going to suggest that seven days is better than selecting five days, specific days on a weekend, that I think will probably have more hardship than just setting aside for a full week. Just my thought process.
Second? So, seven days proposed, seconded by Mr. Norton. Further discussion?
I completely endorse the seven days idea. My only, and I'd be entirely willing to vote yes on this, but I'm just concerned a little bit, just logistically. They have five days from receipt of the letter, Kim, so if they get a letter from us tomorrow or the next day...
I believe it's five days from receipt of their letter.
Okay, so that's...
To appeal to the ABCC.
Yeah.
But John did remind me of a good point, that if they do appeal it, then this is, this suspension is held until the ABCC sends something back down to the local licensing authority yourselves.
But this only would give them then, in essence, one or two days to decide to appeal. Correct?
Because of non-business days?
Correct. That's my only, my...
Well, why don't we ask them? Do you need more than, more time than that to decide whether you're going to appeal or not?
No.
Okay. They said they're fine with that.
I'll tell you why, and this is why. If you want to appeal it, you can appeal it.
You can appeal it anyway. They can appeal it, and it makes no difference.
My attitude is, regardless of that, serve the time. Get it done, get it over with. You're done. Otherwise, this is going to continue to linger, and I presume the next time we come back to see you folks, it'll be five days, it'll be five days that are probably going to be focused on, that are going to be hitting various weekends. They're going to be probably important weekends, before the Super Bowl, between this or that, between whatever. So my suggestion is, get it over before the holidays. The sooner the better.
And you're going to get at least three days from the ABCC.
Right.
At some point in the future, that's...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What are the rules on, like, how do you cover it? Does everything have to be covered with tar? Like, how does that work?
I think, I don't know that, but I suggest, from seeing it around, I think I have to do is get a whole bunch of, you know, yellow, or something that just says, and shut the lights off, and basically, we're not selling. That's it.
You know?
Signage.
We'll assist them in coming up with a way to secure that policy.
Mr. Murray?
Again, I don't mean to be sticking on, I'm just kind of curious. If they were to decide to appeal this, is our case weakened because we started a suspension, a temporary suspension, before the five-day window is up? Would that...
When, when would the five-day window start?
Well, if they, let's say they get the letter on Thursday. It's five business days, Kim? So...
I would say so, yeah.
So, if they get the letter on Thursday, I guess the five days would start on Friday. So Friday, the second, Monday, two, three, four, five, that would, the fifth day would be the Thursday, the eighth. Something like that.
From the night to the...
But I'm, again, I'm fine. I just, I'm just trying to get this right, because I want to make sure our case is as strong as possible, because I absolutely endorse this.
I don't think it matters.
I don't think, I just don't see, I could be wrong here, but if, and maybe we're beating a dead heart, but if they appeal it, they appeal it, and, and our vote, our suspension, it goes in the balance till after the...
Then it's going to come back down to us.
After the ABC.
I understand all that.
And, and my point is, Rick, so my point is this. If it comes back down to us, I'm going to be looking for really good days, days that are going to impact business.
As will I.
So my point being is, you know, let's get it done and over with. Seven days, next week, boom. It's, you know, probably not going to, you know, seven days is a lot of days for business, I understand that, but it's not going to be significant unless it's, if it happens to be the 18th through the 24th of December, I think it's going to be a big hit in your wallet, then it will be from the 4th to the 10th. And if it gets appealed, so be it. It's your prerogative, it's your right, and I'm not going to deny you that. But I suspect if it comes back down, I'm going to be looking at it some days that are going to have some significant impact on their business, before July 4th, before Memorial Day, before, you know, significant holidays where people like to go and buy beer, beer and wine, so. I, I know you do. I'm trying to tell him.
No, but I completely agree with everything you're saying. I just want to make sure we're not doing...
I think, I think we're...
I just want to make sure we're not, you know...
I, I think that they're kind of nodding that that's fine with them, and they want it done quickly, too, so...
Because we have the policy already, so I'm not really...
Okay, I completely agree with the strength.
So do we have a second for this? Mr. Norton seconded?
I think I seconded it, I think.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. The only thing, I just want to reiterate, is the next offense is, you know...
Could be. It could be. I'm not saying it will.
It's going to be much harder, and it could go up to revoking your license. So please, you know...
I'd like to be, you guys be the poster child, the, you know, the example for the rest of the town. Every time that we do a raid, the ABCC does a raid, whatever, just make sure you pass. Okay?
Thanks. Thank you, Detective. Thank you, Chief. Okay. We'll move on to, back to item number...
Oops, sorry.
Four.
Four, which is the pledge of a license for the Backyard Burger Bar. How are you?
Good. Joanie Wilson, A Claymore Terrace, Situate.
You, Joan? All right, you were here before us to get the license pledge to, I can't remember the establishment, but...
South Coastal Bank.
South Coastal Bank. I guess it's good that you heard the hearing there, so you can take it seriously. There will be violations, and, again, a policy, a formal policy will go out to everybody that has a liquor license this year, so that everyone's clear in terms of what the penalties are for violations. And, that being said, is there any questions from the board in terms of the documentation that we were given? Nope, all look good to me. Joe, look good to you?
It looks good. I just, it's a fairly routine item for places to, to pledge their license or security of the bank. It was not unusual at all. We've done it.
We've done this a number of times.
Many, many a times.
Looks good to me, Mr. Chair. So?
Move that the board of selectmen vote to grant pledge of the common vicular, all kinds of alcoholic beverages, beverages license, number 108600055, held by 17 New Driftway, Inc., doing businesses, Backyard Burgers Bar. 17 New Driftway, Situate, Massachusetts, to South Coastal Bank, 768 Main Street, Weymouth, Massachusetts.
Second by Mr. Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
Can I ask you a question, too? I wanted to know if I could have someone play guitar with no amp that was on there as well.
Absolutely.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
Well, that, okay, so the liquor license, that's the pledge.
Okay.
And now we're going to vote for an entertainment license, possibly.
All right.
So, the next issue before us is the entertainment license for the establishment. Why don't you tell us a little bit about, so you're looking for non-amplified guitar music from Tuesday to Friday, from 4:00 to 9:00, and Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 10:00, indoors only?
Indoors, mhm.
Any discussion on that?
Yes.
I think this, Kim, this falls in line with what other, the other establishments in town that we've given them.
Yes.
No discussion?
Oh, from anyone?
I don't know, you want to...
Oh, I thought you were just looking that way. Joanie, what about the, the neighbors? Do they know this is, I know that the meeting's posted, but if you talk to them, I know they were there. And if they're on board, that's great, you know?
No, I have not talked to the Chasens. I will. But they go, they're down in Florida from January to June, but I'm not going, it's not going to be anything loud.
It's all inside, right.
It's going to be just maybe like, someone strumming a guitar, like jazz or something, you know?
All right, good.
I don't, I don't want loud music. But if you want me to talk to them, I gladly will.
No, that's, that's...
Because, you know, the neighbors, I have to respect the neighbors.
Right.
You know, I don't want anybody...
You know, if, if you bother them, they're going to be in here at our next meeting.
Right, I know, I know that.
And, as you've seen in some of the other establishments, so it's, it's always best to work with them.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
And they're going to be your most frequent customers, so...
I'm sure.
Mr. Murray?
In my eyes, the, the key thing here is it's indoors and it's non-amplified, so I'm totally fine with it.
Yeah, and I have concrete walls, so...
So, if everyone's in, any other discussion?
Motion?
Thank you.
Move the board of selectmen vote to grant an entertainment license for 17 New Driftway, Inc., doing businesses, Backyard Burger Bar, 17 New Driftway, Situate, for non-amplified guitar music from Tuesday to Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, from 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m., indoors only.
Second? Second. Just before we vote, is this, this is just for the remainder of this year, right?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, so there'll be a renewal coming up? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. And one last question for you. What are you opening?
Hopefully, December 14th.
December 14th. Mark your calendars. I see all the construction going on there. It looks like...
It's really cool.
There's a lot going on, so good luck.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good luck.
See ya.
Okay, now moving to item number five, which is an emergency sewer tie-in at 27 Captain Pierce Road.
Frank, good evening.
Frank, how are you?
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Kendra, if you want to come up also?
Thank you. This is an emergency sewer connection that's pretty textbook from the ones we've been doing over the years. It's got a failed cesspool that's been there forever, failed the perk test. The system's in the groundwater, essentially. And we've got some pictures, if you have, of, of the breakout that, that you can see. The, the tenants of the property, obviously, have, have talked about the problem in the yard. We, I asked the engineer to get the pumping records, which I just passed up to you guys. It was pumped in September and November, and, and both pumpers observed in their, in their reports that, that there was breakout in, in the yard. They have backup into, into the house. It's, we looked at the water records. They're using about half of what people would use for a two-bedroom house, but they're still having this type of a problem. So it's, it's creating, obviously, a pretty hazardous situation. Because of the soils, which are typical of the neighborhood, most of which is, is sewered, you can't put even an innovative system in there. So the only alternative would be a tight tank. And, and from the board's perspective, the preferred alternative to that is, is an emergency sewer connection. And the engineer will address more particularly the ideas with respect to how to make that connection, which the, the selectmen have asked us to address as part of this presentation, even though I, will confess, I don't have a whole lot of expertise in that area. Greg?
Who you, just...
Greg, if you could just say who you are.
Identify yourself, yeah.
For the record, Gregory Morrison, a registered engineer, Morrison Cheering. Submitted with the application is a copy of the plan that I prepared showing the connection of this property. You'll note that, again, it's a two-bedroom house. The owner of the property is in a retirement, or not a retirement home, a nursing home. It's not for a sale of this property. What we're proposing, the existing system is in the back of the house. We're proposing to use that existing plumbing, put in a new E1 grinder pump, which is a standard pump, used another place in the town. And that pump will pump through a horse main out to the street to Captain Pierce Road. Out at Captain Pierce Road, there's an existing two-and-a-half-inch horse main that we believe has sufficient capacity directly along the frontage of this property. uh, directly along the frontage of this property, um, on the left side of this presentation board, you'll see, this is the neighborhood, our site right here, at the corner of Captain Pierce Road and Hillside Road, all of the properties in yellow are tied into the town sewerage system, the line in green represents that two-and-a-half inch force main, um, it currently services the DPW garage building, which is just off this page to the left, um, the remainder of the properties here, um, are tied in via spaghetti lines up to Tilden Road or, uh, along Roses Lane, there's a new three-inch line that was installed there last year, um, we understand the board has allowed people to tie into force mains in this area, or, uh, in specifically the force main from the school up to this, this manhole at the intersection of the hill, so that's ultimately the same destination point that we're proposing our connection on.
What are the pink ones?
The pink ones are, um, septic systems that were installed fairly recently where they had alternative treatment systems, um, on those sites there, uh, the perk tests were greater than sixty minutes an inch, they were extremely tough sites, um, but we were able to get septic systems in, I personally designed one of them, um, so, this neighborhood, I guess what I'm trying to say is, in general, is a real tough neighborhood to work, and if you can't get an alternative system, and I'm familiar with all of the technologies out there, I wasn't able to come up with a design on this site, um, I would've tried, as I did on the, the pink sites, that's why we're here.
A quick question, why aren't they tied in? Why are all those other yellow ones tied in but not them?
There was Roses Lane.
Roses Lane, that's Roses Lane, so they were just one, one house over?
Roses Lane goes down off the bottom of the diaphragm.
Right, okay, so they were not included in that loop?
No.
No, they were not.
Correct. If I may, just a question, and, and you brought it up, you said the owner was in a retirement home or a...
A, a nursing home.
A nursing home.
Yes.
Is the house occupied now?
It is, right now, uh, it is occupied by three people, uh, they use that income to supplement the, uh, you know, to offset the costs of the nursing home care.
Are they...
It's rented, right now.
It's rented?
By three people.
Okay, and you say it's not for sale, but that's, you know, as we all know, that's a big problem we have sometimes.
It will be.
You know? Just one other question, if I may, I've just, how, how big is the lot?
A lot itself is four, yeah, forty thousand square feet.
An acre.
Yeah, an acre, the rear third of it or so is wetland area, so, you lose, you lose the rear third, we're ten thousand square feet, further, when we're Title V, has setbacks from that, so...
I know.
Effectively, you're only, have about twenty thousand square feet to play with, uh, in looking at a system, we did three different test pits out there, witnessed by the Town Board of Health, they all banned, um, parks.
Okay, I just, you know, again, you know, this, over the years, this, this has been coming up so often that it's, I'm sure Frank and Jennifer are tired, but, you know, preparing it, but, you know, again, my only concern is, and, and you're telling me it's not for sale, and that's fine, uh, but, for every one we put in, that's sold the next week, or for sale sign goes up the next week, someone doesn't get one, down the road, and it just isn't right, if that's the only reason that we're doing this, and I'm taking your word and the board's word, of course, that, uh, that's not the only reason we're doing it.
Mr. Harris?
What's not right is a new neighborhood that gets built, or a brand-new house that gets built and gets tied right in, this house is sixty, seventy years old, it's one of those brick ranches that we've seen for a long time, these guys did a great job, you guys asked the same questions I asked when I sat in the hearing at the Board of Health, this was the only thing missing, two months, and they've had to have it pumped, there were the pitches there, if Jennifer had any input when DEP, correct me if I'm mistaken, was laying out the priority districts, she probably would've got this area included, and to answer Tony's question, those ones in the pink probably would've been included in the whole area, it's nothing but clay, as we found out at town meeting with, with Roses Lane and Conslay, it is a big lot, I asked the same question of Greg, but, it's like, it'd be like a swimming pool, my only question is, and I don't think I asked it, I don't know if there are stubs in that forced main from DPW, so just, I'd really like to see this house get tied into that, the last thing I wanna see is another spaghetti line, the spaghetti lines that we approved at like, two Captain Pierce and right around the intersection, I remember approving them, they're pretty close to the sewer main on vinyl, so that, and at the time, there wasn't the forced main coming up from the DPW, I just don't wanna be putting in more spaghetti lines in public ways, that's all, but I think these guys have answered all the question...
Did you have something, Rick?
No, Al has.
That's for Kevin, did you, or Al?
Yeah, I, I agree with Al, um, we had a couple issues with this, um, one, uh, the first issue is the street opening permits have closed for rubbing up the roadway and paving the roadway and patching the roadway, that was one issue that we had concern, also, I met with Mr. Moss, the three-inch line that goes up off Roses Lane was just put in as a betterment, all those people are still paying a betterment on that line, from Roses Lane and Conslay, and we have had issues with the two-and-a-half inch line that goes back to the DPW, it's already backed up once, and we said we wouldn't allow another tie-in, so that would require going all the way up to, um, in Vinyl Road corner, which is about seven hundred feet tied into the main line, um, not just a simple connection there, as shown from what we talked about prior.
And I'd like to add to what Mr. Caffey has to say, and that is that, um, first of all, always glad to have a new sewer customer, uh, secondly, always glad to have a new sewer customer at a time when we're not going to be tearing up the streets and interfering with snowplow operations and create, uh, potential public safety issues, um, thirdly, always glad to have a new, uh, customers for the sewer plant, however, uh, just around the corner, those folks have just paid nineteen thousand dollar betterment to, um, install a new sewer system that services their neighborhood additionally, to completely renovate the street, put in new streets, and thirdly, to do it during the season, when that work can be properly done, as opposed to the middle of December, which is realistically when this project would start, um, I would, uh, be glad to have the new sewer customer, be glad to have the new sewer customer install a private line, because once it's connected into someone else's private line, then there's a relationship between the two private line owners that has to be maintained by the private owners, or if it's tied into a public line, then there's a relationship that now all of a sudden the town is maintaining a public line, so, uh, the pitch we would make would be that, other customers have had, uh, along the street have had to run private lines up, which they maintain, um, rather than tying into a quasi-public line, which is the one that runs the highway department, and it has been problematic in the past, because this, its purpose is to pump, um, truck cleaning, truck cleaning material, not sewage, it's designed to be used when we're hosing down the trucks in the winter from the salt operation, to then pump that up the street, so we've had that clogged a couple of times, it's a poor design to start with, and we're currently not even considering using it, so, the DPW line is problematic for us, the neighborhoods of budding have all had, uh, a significant investment made to improve streets as well as to, um, put in the sewer lines, which, which they run privately all the way up to the top of the hill, and thirdly, it's the middle of winter by the time this thing gets started, and we're gonna have snowstorms, and this will interfere with snowplow operations and create, and we'll need this, that's the issues for, for the neighborhoods as well as the commuters in the area, we would, uh, encourage that this project be moved to another time of the year, such as March, when the work can be done effectively, uh, this is not a new issue, so it's not like it, an emergency popped up this weekend, or last weekend, or the weekend before, but it's been an issue being worked on for quite a while, and it will create an emergency if the work is done in the middle of winter, and we have then, the street torn up, and we're trying to keep traffic moving with snowplows.
Thank you, can you just confirm, is this, is this a new issue in your opinion?
It is to the Board of Health, uh, you know, I mean, it, actually, this is, we got in front of you probably faster than we ever have, we only heard this two weeks ago, and...
But, what, what they told you though, did they tell you that anything dramatically happened in the last month or so, or is this something they've been dealing with?
Go ahead, Greg.
If I may, this, this arose in August, this house does not have a basement, it's on a slab of foundation, so when it backs up, it backs up into the living space, uh, the property backed up in August, uh, pumping records, uh, September second, we had a pumper come out, pumped the property, they observed breakout of the septic system, I was immediately retained in September, I went out on October seventh to do a Title V investigation and inspection, failed October seventh, October twelfth, I lined up perk tests.
So August was the first time that there was an incident?
August, it was the first time that I had problems, yes, so, in October, I lined up perk tests, immediately after the perk tests, I filed with the Board of Health, the Board of Health meets once a month, their meeting was scheduled for November fourteenth, so, I went to that meeting, we're on the next selectman's agenda after that, uh, so it, it kinda has been an ongoing issue since August, um, and the system has backed up since, it backed up again two weeks ago, um, and again, it's backing up into living space, so, there are ki, there are kind of three issues that I see here coming out of the talks, one is the eligibility for the project to tie into town sewer, I hope that we've made a strong case that we're eligible for that, two is the street opening permit, uh, I applied for a street opening permit to try to meet that deadline November first, when they shut down the street opening permits, um, that permit was, was declined by the DPW, because we hadn't had the approval of this meeting yet, uh, but I would like to know that there are projects in town right now where they are laying pipe, um, in the streets, we just installed services, uh, at the new house at Paulman Marina, uh, water service and sewer service are there within the past week, we also have the gas company doing work down on Brook Street at the current, it used to be that they shut trench permits down and street opening permits because you couldn't get asphalt, past November fifteenth, all the plants shut down, that's not the case with today's markets, they keep the plants open essentially year-round or until late December, I'd also point out that, the DPW has issued this statement in their October fourteenth memorandum to all drain layers in the town, saying that in a hazardous condition which would endanger life or property, excavation shall not be delayed, excavations made during this period will be revisited with a temporary cold patch until the spring, at that time, um, the cold patch will be removed and repairs made to the roadway, so, this client has retained PF Spencer, uh, to do this project, and he is ready to move on at the beginning next week, we don't expect it'll take more than a week, we expect that we'll be able to do a full, uh, road patch, we expect that the asphalt plants will be open next week, they're open as of this week, we've had, uh, very fine weather, so, that's not the issue.
Can I ask, um, why a tight tank isn't being recommended for this site?
There are a couple reasons why a tight tank would not be recommended for this site, uh, where, where we would be putting the tight tank is extremely high groundwater conditions, tanks, as watertight as you try to make them, always do leak, so, you're gonna be getting groundwater into the tight tank, you know, therefore reducing the capacity of the tight tank, number one, number two, this house is gonna generate two-hundred-and-twenty gallons of water to, a day, that's what a two-bedroom house generates, you install a tight tank, you know, with five thousand gallons capacity or so, these people are gonna be paying hundreds of dollars every month to pump that tank out and take it to the town Situate Sewerage Plant, if we can pipe it up to the street to a pipe, it's gonna get to the same sewage plant, and it's a much better situation, it saves costs on the whole market.
It's not impossible, though.
It is certainly not impossible.
And so, and tight tanks that exist, for example, in Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, all over Western Mass, along riverbanks and streams with high groundwater, and are prevalent, is just not being recommended here, cause it would be an additional cost to the homeowner?
Not that, not that it's an additional cost, that it's a, um, that the town has allowed other properties in the immediate vicinity here to...
The town in the past has allowed us.
That is correct, as well as within the past...
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a great point.
Okay. Mr. Harrison, then?
We told many years ago, the Board of Health, that if there was no other alternative other than a tight, you know, tight tank, come to us, you know, we didn't really want any homes on tight tanks, there was one on Conslay before the sewer line was run, and that person, if I'm not mistaken, might have been one of the twenty-seven homes, I'm not sure, but anyway, um, one thing I did fail to mention in your meeting and tonight, but Al brought it up, absolutely should this person not pay, as Joe just whispered to me, not pay the same amount of money as any one of those other homes have paid, if that's, if it does get tied in, and I was unaware that the sewer line, that's not that old, was having problems, I just wasn't, wasn't aware of that.
So you're saying they should or should not pay?
Absolutely should, absolutely should, I mean, that's not fair to, fair to anyone in the district, it's right around eighteen or twenty thousand dollars, and it's gonna increase the value of the house.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
This actually goes to DPW, the Carnsley and Roses Lane, um, sewer, where does it go, does it actually connect to Captain Pierce and go up?
It's, uh, it's a private line, it's, it's now a public line since it was publicly installed as part of the betterment process.
Right.
And it runs, uh, up Carnsley, up Newfield and Roses Lane, up Carnsley and all the way up to the top of the hill.
To, on top, when you say Captain Pierce, up to the top of here, the hill of, uh, of Tilden and every, okay, goes up and over, so...
To the board of Ann Vinyl.
All right, so my question then would be this, um, and I don't know the numbers, but what would the cost be, in other words, from their property, which happens to be the site, if they were to tap into sewer, and they, I would assume they'd have to put in, instead of a two-and-a-half inch pipe, they'd have to have a three-inch pipe, is that what it is, or is it a five-inch pipe?
They would put in a smaller pipe.
Now, I'm, just generally, if we had a, if we had a public sewer project going right in front of their home, what would the pipe size be?
Well, if we were to install a public sewer on that street, we would have to install a two-and-a-half or three-inch line.
Okay, and what's there now, just, uh...
Um, nothing really, just the private spaghetti lines.
Don't you have one going down to the DPW shed?
Yeah, two-inch line.
A two-inch, so it'd have to be upgraded to at least two-and-a-half or three-inch, right? The reason why I'm asking that is because, and I don't know what the cost is, but I'm saying if you're, suggesting that they need to be able to pay to upgrade the way the other people have, if you were to put a pipe out from the site to the road, and they'd only have to take it up one house, which is the house next to them, right? And I don't know who, who lives there, but if they came in before us and said, guess what, we wanna tie in, then they should be paying the betterment fee of nineteen grand, or whatever it would be, obviously, it's gonna go through the client who's here, but I'm saying, uh, at least that would then make sure that the pipe going up to the connection would be the, the, the size it should be.
And it's going to...
And it's going, it's not a spaghetti line, it's actual line that's going.
It's piecemeal, it's piecemeal engineering, public sewage on that street, okay, and, as you pointed out, Sean, Mr. Harrison, there was a, uh, property owner, um, on Carnsley, uh, waiting for the solution and, uh, put in a tight tank, so the tight tank was the interim solution until a properly designed public system could be put in for Newfield, uh, Roses Lane and Carnsley, which resulted in a complete fix in that area, if you noticed, you've driven down that section of Captain Pierce, it's in abominable condition, because it's been now dug up numerous times to put in the spaghetti line for the DPW, the spaghetti line, uh, for other properties, it's, it's a mess up there right now, so to put one more spaghetti line in, or to dig it up one more time is, you know, what's happening is, the public is absorbing a lot of the cost of maintaining that poorly maintained street, because we keep digging it up for private sewage, which is important, I don't mean to say that, denigrate the needs for sewage, we might be better served by saying, okay, that area should be sewered, if it's, if it's such a disaster, which apparently it is, because we've now got three, four, you know, the next person will be asking for it, the person next to this house will now be saying, why can't I get sewored, I have the same situation, legitimately, so...
Mr. Norton?
If, I'm not even sure, is the owner of the property here tonight?
It's a nursing home.
Okay, there's no one here that can, that can answer the question, will he be able to, will he agree to pay, if this board decides, eighteen thousand dollars to tie in, is there, or is there?
If that's the betterment that this board has charged to other properties in the same scenario, I think he would be willing to do it.
You think he would, but with all due respect, I mean, we don't, we don't know, do we?
We don't, we don't have that answer.
Mr. Harrison, Mr. Murray?
I just wanna ask you a question of Greg, it's almost, if it's, all right with you, Tony, it's almost a swap-off, a, a tight tank or some type of private solution is gonna be twenty thousand dollars, and that's what he's got, a private system, I mean, so I, I, am I right, is it a fair guess to say it's almost the same?
Is it a fair guess to say it's almost the same?
It would be close to that.
Right.
I just can't... I can't vote for this tonight unless, and I'll say this to the board, unless the homeowner is agreeable to whatever the betterment is, 18,000 or 18...
Well, that would be the contingency.
Yeah. Well, it hasn't been the contingency of the past. You know, and that's why I'm just saying, let's put an end to it and start doing it right.
One second. One second, Jennifer. Mr. Murray?
Yeah. I have no idea about any of these costs and how much it costs to do sorts of things. What if we were to approve this, but it would have to be maybe not tonight or tonight with contingencies or whatever, but just I'm not getting wrapped up on the process about that. But how much does it cost for them to put in the proper-sized pipe to get from their property, get an easement from their neighbor, put a stub in so their neighbor can tie in if he or she wants to, if they were to pay a betterment? But how much would it cost to get them from their site up to Carnsley with a proper pipe?
Well, it's a brand...
Is that a big number?
It's a brand-new road, you know.
No, no, but just across the land.
No, I know, but you gotta tie in.
Yeah, but I mean, is that...
I know, it makes... It almost makes... I know what you're saying, but it's a brand-new road from gutter to gutter.
Up on...
Generally, you don't wanna be putting pipes on private property. You'd like to have it in a public way so you can gain access to it whenever you want.
Could we build in a public easement or a DPW easement?
Why would we?
One second. I'm just trying to... I'm trying to come to some solution.
I think what we do is we pay.
They pay, they get sewer, the whole area's improved at no cost to us.
You know, I'm gonna try and go in order here.
I don't know if that's like a $5,000 solution or not.
Jennifer and Frank had...
$200,000 to do that. I have no idea if that's even the right scale to put pipe in from their house up to Carnsley.
Which either one of you...
Well, I would, because of the timeframe, considering weather for doing work, I would hope the board would consider making a vote tonight, even if it includes contingencies. And if the owner, for some reason, should decide not to accept the contingency, then they won't get a sewer permit and the work won't have it.
Frank, did you have...
I don't know if we wanna debate too much this tank, tight tank thing. I think Mr. Harris mentioned the policy has been, as long as I've been doing this, which is over a decade now, and I think for the board of selectmen even more than that, that if a homeowner is faced with an emergency situation, the only alternative is a tight tank. The sewage is gonna end up in the sewage treatment plant anyway. The tight tank is gonna devalue the property. We're gonna collect less property taxes because the homeowner's gonna get an abatement. That that is not the preferred alternative. It's preferred alternative is to allow the emergency sewer connection. Hopefully, you know, in the long term, we're gonna sewer most of the town, but that's... We're gonna deal with these intermediate problems.
That's a good point.
Well, with due respect to Mr. Lynch, we've had meetings about revisiting that whole issue about tight tanks. And I question whether devalues a property. I have had a lot of experience with tight tanks in my career. And I think it's certainly something that we need to revisit and seriously consider because the spaghetti lines and the redigging up of new roads and sewer infrastructure being gerrymandered throughout the town is problems and challenges the DPW Sewer Department is dealing with every single week because of those decisions made in prior decades and prior years. And it's time, and I think we have in the last few years, been moving in a different direction in terms of the maintenance and decision-making around our sewer system.
So I wanna pose a question to you. You see what we want. We want to charge them the betterment and we want them to get the sewer, just like everybody else, on the right-sized pipe, not a spaghetti line, getting up to the system. So can you engineer that?
Yes. What I wanna clarify is the pipe that goes from the DPW garage up to the manhole is a two-and-a-half-inch pipe.
What manhole?
The manhole at the intersection of Tilden Road.
Thank you.
And Manhole Road. So that pipe there is a two-and-a-half-inch pipe that is more than adequate to handle the flows for this project.
But we've been told that this...
The town of Situate paid for that pipe.
Okay. So, but if they're being charged a betterment, Al, let me ask you a question. You said you've had problems with that pipe in terms of backup or what have you. If they were to tie into that properly, pay a betterment, will that function efficiently?
I'm not technically capable of answering that question, but I will be within a week.
Give me a...
Well, honestly, I don't know. You know, we've got a spaghetti line, a small pipe pumping into a big pipe.
Well, we're not gonna do a spaghetti line.
No, no. No, I'm saying, when you come out of the house with a small pipe, you go into a big pipe. You know, you have to have movement through that pipe to get it up to the top of the hill.
But what if we didn't do a small... What if they did a three-inch pipe or something going from the house to that?
No, it's not the size of that pipe. It's just the quantity of material going through there and trying to push it up the hill.
The force main, where's the force? Is it... Is the force main at the bottom at the shed?
Yes.
Okay. What happens is another... What he's trying to say is if the flow's coming in halfway up the hill and the force main's not on, it's gonna slide right down the hill into where it's located, which is the shed. So the issue you're saying is...
We don't design sewer pipes, okay? We hire PEs to do that. We don't have PEs here. Weston and Sampson, for instance, designed the sewer system for Carnsley and Newfield and Rosas Lane. So I really have to consult with our consulting engineers to answer that question. Let's assume that it's possible as a... From hit go, you know? But still, that doesn't solve the problem. Well, it's the middle of winter. The issue was resolved as the middle of winter and who's gonna pay to pave the streets? So I think...
Well, I think, I... My opinion, I don't know the sense of the board, if they're gonna pay a betterment to do it and it can not disrupt the streets too much, it's just gonna be in front of their home. If it's gonna work that way, then let's do it. You know, and unfortunately, there's a timeliness to it because we've had six-degree weather and eventually it's gonna snow, like you said. So, you know, if we could start it next week, then more than likely it'll get done without a huge amount of chaos to the plowing system. So I'm not an engineer. I don't know...
When's our next meeting? It is next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday.
Maybe what we should do, Mr. Chairman, is, and I'm not trying to delay anything because, you know, the breakout is gross. There's no doubt about it. So we have a health and safety issue that needs to be dealt with. However, if they're pumping it right now, I think they could pump it a little later. I would suggest that maybe we continue this hearing until next week. In the meantime, if that's enough time for the DPW to take a look with a physical engineer, PE, to say, "Okay, what could happen?" Because I'm not sure whether it's lower gradient where the house is located as opposed... I think it is. I think it's downhill from the intersection of Carnsley and Tilden to kinda figure out if the flow of the pipe has to be a three-inch diameter as opposed to two-and-a-half, then maybe we should do that with a betterment. I will say, though, I know that the issue with the roads and the plowing's important. If the road's already been torn up anyways, tearing it up a little bit more with coat patch, everything else, now's the time to do it as opposed to be doing the road. However, I would say maybe there's a bond or something we can enforce to say, make sure in the spring. But then again, Pete Spencer's a great, you know... He does... He's a local guy. He's from the town. His company's great. So, I don't know. I'd say let's postpone it for one week, get a little bit more information and have it back again and then make a decision.
And as a follow-up to what John said, that week would hopefully give somebody an opportunity to go to the owner.
Yes.
Yeah, good point.
And get something in writing that he is willing to, if the board votes in that direction, which I'm not sure it will, but he'd be willing to pay the... You can get a number from DPW, maybe whatever the betterment is, same as Rosas Lane looks like. I mean, I gotta be honest, I am concerned, you know, with the town pipe. You know, I am concerned that our DPW, who runs our sewer system, has problems with the project. You know, I won't let you leave here without understanding that. I do have... I listen to them. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If we vote this tonight, just make a contingent that Al and Kevin are on board and then they won't have to come back. Make a contingent on, you know, the betterment of 18, $20,000. Make it... If we approve this tonight, if I'm not mistaken, does it go to DEP and DPW as well? All right. Well, then let's make it. Let's make sure Al and Kevin are on board with this. And if they don't have to come back, it's one less thing they have to do is come back. We know this weather's not gonna hold out. And I agree with Kevin and Al that, you know, we'll be gonna... The sooner this gets done, if it's gonna get done or it's gonna have to wait until the spring. So if we can make it so, you know, Greg has to get the approval with Al as well, then they won't have to come before us. Add that to the motion.
Mr. Murray? Want to say?
I like Mr. Harris' suggestion.
So...
Could you qualify what that approval is, please? Is that the approval?
Me personally?
Is that the... Is that the approval of the size of the pipe being adequate or what?
That it can be engineered... I would suspect, my understanding of the suggestion, and let me just repeat it to make sure I do understand it, would be that it could be engineered to the satisfaction of DPW so as to, at a minimum, cause no further impingement on the sewer line coming up from the DPW shed up to Tilden and ideally would improve the situation. One thing I'd be interested in is how much would it cost for them to pay for replacing the pipe from their house all the way up to Tilden?
And then also, as Joe mentioned...
Maybe instead of a betterment, have them pay from their house all the way up to Tilden.
I think I would insist on a betterment. They can do whatever way they wanna do it, but I mean, I will not vote for this unless there's a betterment.
Yeah, but I'm saying it might even cost more.
I don't care if it costs more or less.
Correct.
I wanna be fair.
One second.
I'm with you.
Once, I think, do you want Jennifer to go?
Yeah.
Jennifer. We're not gonna do...
Just for your information, any force main that works, works with a pump. And if you resize the pipe halfway up, then you're gonna have to redo the pump probably down at DPW because you resized the pipe.
That's what it takes. That's what it may take.
Well, that... Yeah, that's, again, not our problem.
Well, I mean, you were just talking about, well, just change the size of the pipe. It isn't...
I think he was speaking as just a way to improve the whole system in general. Okay, Al, we've kinda thrown some stuff on your plate. Is this something you feel comfortable with? I mean, I think the goal is make it, if we can do it correctly and they will pay for it, then we can do it quickly. That's what the sense, I think the sense of the board is. But I don't wanna put too much of a burden on you. We don't wanna make them wait an extra three days to come see us if you feel comfortable that it can be done with your approval.
Yeah, that's what I did.
You know, what goes through my head is people who are not within a stone's throw of the sewer line have exactly the same problem and are facing the same issue with putting in their own tight tanks or maintaining their septic system by pumping it more frequently or...
Well, there's no doubt that we're gonna have more people coming in with this issue, but, I mean, just by the photos, the stuff's backing into their house. So this is kind of a unique situation, I would guess. And obviously, the Board of Health is...
You don't get that many.
Right, wholeheartedly saying...
Every time, yeah. Three or four a year at the most.
Three or four times a year.
Oh, no. How many times is it pumped?
Do we have people coming in asking for emergency sewer connection?
No, no, I'm sorry. How often is this pumped?
Every two months.
I'm sorry.
Every two months.
That's... Well, it was pumped in September and then in end of October.
About every month.
I get it, John, a lot.
I pump it every month, you know, until March. And then we come up with a solution whereby we're not tearing up the streets, but...
Well, that may be, if you come back to us and you don't feel that the plan is, without being, you know, hard-nosed, you know, if we can make it work, let's make it work. If not, then we'll pump it once a month for three and four months until we get to the spring and figure out how to do it. Is everyone...
All right. Do you want a motion? Oh, sorry.
I'm not... If you're asking a question, I'm not completely comfortable with it.
Okay.
But I'll let it go.
No, no. I mean...
Well, I think I've spoken it out, and I don't wanna beat its death, but I am concerned, again, with what I mentioned earlier and...
Well, we've got two options. The people have a serious issue that the health's coming to us with. So we can either tell them to put a tight tank in, let them put a spaghetti line in, or do it properly.
Or pump it frequently.
Well, that's a tight tank.
No.
Well, their current system is leaking, right?
They replace it.
So they're saying, no, the current is...
Can't go on forever like this.
It's going, but with all due respect, it's going on, Frank, throughout the town forever with some people. I know people, and I can speak very personally, who it went on for years with.
Nobody gets sick.
No, no one did get sick.
All right, John, take a stab at it.
All right, I'll take a motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant an emergency tie-in for 27 Captain Pierce Road, providing the homeowner agrees to place a pipe approved by the Department of Public Works from the site to the town public sewer at the intersection of Carnsley and Captain Pierce at a cost no less...
Not that intersection.
That's the intersection where the...
No, they'll probably go straight out to Captain Pierce. So we don't have to say the location.
All right.
All right. Public sewer at the intersection... Public sewer at the cost no less than the cost of a betterment from... Of the cost of the homeowners of, was it Rosas Lane?
Has that imposed on the... Focus on Rosas Lane?
As opposed on those at Rosas Lane. Kim, do you have... Does that make any sense? Do you got it? Otherwise...
Did you put, you know, based on the approval of...
The contingencies, approved by the Department of Public Works.
Okay. Would you mind just reading that back?
Well...
She hasn't...
Yeah, actually, I...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right.
Vote to grant a tie-in, providing, number one, the pipe approved is approved by the DPW. Oh, see, this is where it gets pretty confusing, because John was talking about different intersections. So, no, I actually can't read that.
So there's not gonna be any intersection, a pipe that's approved and a system that's approved by the DPW and that the people agree to play the betterment equal to Rosas Lane?
Yes.
Yeah, and you can... So we've got a motion. Someone would have to second it to...
Second.
Go further. Second. We'll have some last second discussion. Joe?
One point, I'm gonna vote no, only because I agree with John's first suggestion of getting these questions that we have answered before we vote. We're not... That's not gonna happen. We're gonna vote on something tonight that, to me, there's just too many questions that could very well be answered, but they're not being answered tonight. And I think we're in dangerous ground when we start voting on things dependent upon so many things. And that's all.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
No.
No? Four to one. Kim, can you do me a favor and put this on the agenda for next week? So, Al, if you have any concerns on it, at least we're on the agenda for next week and we can address it and make a decision then.
Can I just say one? I was gonna mention it earlier.
Of course you can.
If, Al, if, you know, if it'd make, you know, possibly run it by Steve at Weston and Sampson, you know, that's, I mean, someone who's so familiar with the area, that's...
May I be included in those discussions? I'm a professional engineer. I presented this to the DPW and had not been questioned on it. I presented it to them for a while. Can you present that discussion?
Well, I don't... Well, I don't, you'll probably talk to him, but present a plan and give it, do the work, give it to him and tell him what your suggestion is, and he'll put it before Weston and Sampson. Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. All right, we'll move on to, I, we did number six, we'll move on to number seven, the Situate Boat Works leasehold mortgages. So, this is basically executing documents that we've already talked about for the lease at the new Maritime Center that allow, uh, that's that word, this stuff, isn't this in terms of financing, getting the documents in line?
Yes. Make a motion.
Is it in discussions, again, we've discussed this in detail in the past, and this is, Town Council just wanted us to look at it again before we voted officially.
Motion.
I do.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept and execute four documents entitled consent, estoppel, and agreement of landlord to leasehold mortgage.
Second, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to number eight, which is a poll petition with National Grid, is anyone here from National Grid? How are you?
Fine.
Better than we were last Christmas.
True.
Is your name Daniel?
No, my name's Tom Sihaquey, I'm a central designer station at Abrockton.
So, tell us what you want to do.
Well, uh, the one issue here I have is with the, the pole on Elm Street, I, I did some checking in it today with the, uh, the people that went out looked at it, and I believe that the grant is not required for that, the pole was moved approximately eighteen inches, and I believe it was moved onto private property, and now the new riser pole, into a new development going in there, and there was an easement granted, and I believe that this, the pole in question is now part of that easement, so the grant is not required.
I can't, I can't-
Say that again, in other words, Lincoln, on the one on Country Way, you're saying?
No, no, Elm, Elm Street.
Elm Street, okay.
Should Al be in here? Does he know anything about that?
I already-
Nope.
Yeah, Elm Street, looks like all it is, is basically you're putting it underground through the whole subdivision, right?
Right, and, and the pole on the street, but pole thirteen is, is now-
It's on private property.
It's on private property, but it was covered under the easement, so the grant was not required for that pole.
So, in other words, we don't really need to vote on that?
Right.
Got you, okay.
The next one?
Now, number-
However, the one on Country Way-
That one's a little different.
That one's a little different, that is a pole in, in the backyard of 787 Country Way, the property owners want it taken out of there, so we want to move it out to the street, and there'll be a stub pole out in the street, and I believe you have a sketch that shows the location of it, in front of 787 Country Way in Situate.
Now, what is a stub pole?
What it is, it's a shorter pole than a main line pole, it's usually on the opposite side of the street, and that takes the place of a guy wire that would normally be in the road, and you just can't put it in the road, and you put a pole to pole guy and a pole on the opposite side of the road, and that takes the tension off the pole, the main line pole.
So, it's like a guideline that goes across the way and just holds on to it for the thing?
Right.
I forgot your name, I said Daniel, because I was, I was being, uh, Tom, I was, I was being a little tongue-in-cheek like Daniel in the lion's den, because I know you're from National Grid, and of course, we have not had the, the greatest, um, response in the past, so please don't, you're, you're, you're the messenger here. One of the biggest problems I have is, is, and I know you're the, you're just here hearing it, so I'm not getting angry at you, but I'm going crazy going down the street, seeing that there's a, a pole that has been cut and sistered to another pole that's, a pole that's put in the ground, and my understanding is, it has to do with National Grid not coming and relocating their, the wires, and it's not the other utility companies, and-
What usually happens is that the set area is divided between Verizon and National Grid, some towns we set, some towns they set, if it's our set, we put the pole in the ground, cut off the existing pole and tie it to the, the new pole, change our facilities over, whatever that may be, primary lines, secondary lines, whatever, notify phone, fire alarm, uh, cat feet, cable TV to come over, say, new pole's in the ground, change your stuff over, cut off that piece of the top, and then we'll come back and take the rest of it away, and until that is done-
They just sit there?
You've got double poles, and normally, what's been happening is the phone company has been just absolutely lack in coming out and changing it.
Okay, so it's not National Grid, or, or it's not the electrical, it's the phone company that we, I should be venting my anger towards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fair enough, you've answered my question, that's, that's really what I was looking for tonight, and, um, I, I apologize, it's misplaced tonight, so.
No, it's quite all right, and ninety percent of the problem, that's, that's what it is, is delay and the other utilities getting off the pole.
Thank you.
So, are you all set with this pole?
Yes, I am, I'm fine.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the Country Way pole?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Just to make sure I understand, this is essentially the request of the homeowner?
Right. Yeah, the, the existing pole's in their backyard and was put in, I think by Tom Edison, and we don't have any rights to beat it, and they want it out.
Is this like a light with a bra on it, or, did I say bra, like something to deflect-
No, just, just a standard wood pole.
Okay.
So, is this the new one or the old one?
That's the new one, that's the location.
So, the wire's going to go across the street?
To support the one across the street.
It's just a cable, isn't it, just a cable?
It's a single line, yeah, it's a single piece of bar aluminum, goes across the street.
Just, just a general question, I mentioned it about a year ago, have you ever seen them tied into trees?
Yes, and they try to take them out because it, the tree does die eventually, and then, and then you run into problems that, bad weather, you get a dead tree, the tree comes down, the line comes down, and the possibility to pull, that supporting will also-
Happened to me, I got clothesline driving down Stockbridge Road because the cable was tied to a dead tree that came over in a windstorm, did a lot of damage that my insurance company had to pay, I got nowhere with National Grid.
We, we used to do that quite a while ago, and trying to get away from that.
Right, I can bring, I can still show you the pole with the wire hanging from it, I would buy it tonight after I told John, did a lot of damage to one of my trucks, but that's that, so.
Yes, please move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant poll petition plan 1154072 for a new stub pole on Country Way in accordance with all directives prescribed by town departments.
Second?
Uh, second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming in.
Happy holidays.
I appreciate the education on sewer lines, too.
Welcome back next Tuesday.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, this was discussed briefly at the last meeting, um, this is the street banner policy, um, Tricia drafted it and, um, and sent it out to us to review, I didn't read it before last meeting, but I read it before this one, it seems pretty straightforward to me, one thing that, that stuck out is it only pertains to Front Street, um, and, um, it's really time periods and fees and size restrictions for it, um, I don't, does anyone have any questions?
The only thing I had was, I know Tricia had seven days, and I was thinking, maybe it should be backed out to at least fourteen days, you know, some events, you know, you want to have broadcasted in advance, if, if you're away one weekend during the summer, you might not see it, so I, I was thinking, instead of a seven day, uh, a banner may not be displayed for more than seven days, maybe it should be fourteen days.
Good point.
I like that idea.
Just two things, one is, um, I have not yet discussed with the DPW who puts it up and takes it down, so, um, that's just a question mark, and then the other thing, just to amend slightly what you have, if you're inclined to approve it, is that the exact location and height is to be, be determined by the fire department.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Chief Judge spoke to me about this between our, this meeting and the last one, so that would be incorporated as part of it.
Okay, um, one other question, is the, is the fifty dollar permit cover the cost of having DPW go install it?
Maybe close, two laborers to go up, you have the bucket truck, I'm assuming, I mean, the fee's up to you, I mean, my guess is that folks who will be requesting it are nonprofit organizations to begin with, so I didn't want to make it outrageous.
Well, why don't we keep it at this and look at it again, after a year's worth of work, if it's seventy-five, then it's seventy-five, or- I said, follow-up question?
Tricia, you said, you haven't spoken to DPW yet about who would be doing it, do you mean who within DPW, or do you mean whether the town would be doing it or not? It needs to be the town doing it.
Right.
Right, so you're, you're not changing that?
We have a bucket truck, it's just yet another thing they'll have to maintain.
Understood, but you're not suggesting that the town not do it?
No, no, I'm not.
Great, I like it.
Location to be determined by fire.
Yep.
Sean, did you have something, or?
Nope.
Your motion?
Uh, I think John's going to make it in one second.
So, this will be a policy, Kim, it says rules, but it would be a board policy for the policy book?
I would say, uh, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the town of Situate Street Banner Program rules as presented by the town administrator with the, um, modification that, um, fourteen days be approved, as well as the banner location be approved by the chief of, uh, the fire department, fire chief.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murray, further discussion, Ms. Burbank? Um, I'm sure there is.
There is, because, A, we don't have a banner policy, so we don't even know if it works yet, it's my understanding that there was some in Front Street in the past, but, um, I, I, you know, I think it's something we could be open to in the future, I don't even know if there's a location, but-
So, this'll, we'll pilot it out for a year, see if the pricing is in line, see if it's used and adjusted after a year. Great, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed, it's unanimous. Moving on to item number ten, which is the report from the town administrator.
Okay, um, you have my report, um, just some updates, we received two proposals for the Gate School feasibility study in November seventeenth, I'm meeting with the Public Building Commission tomorrow evening, uh, to meet with both the, um, bidders, and, um, they will make a recommendation to me, and at that point, uh, I negotiate a fee, this is fee-blind, so, um, hopefully, if things go well, um, we'll be able to make a contract award, uh, not for your meeting on the second, but definitely for your next meeting.
Before you go to the next one, um, just a, a couple things, this has been a hot topic, um, as of late, there's a group of people that are looking into this, actually, the town has looked into it for probably, probably much longer than I can remember, but at least, at least, uh, in detail for the last five years, um, Tricia's taken the initiative over the last couple of years to, um, try and get something done last year in the capital plan, but the funding wasn't there, and this year to get this feasible study, to see what the building can be used for, um, I think that the, the selectmen support improvement of a public building, I think I, I feel comfortable saying that for all of us, um, I think it, it, it really comes at the direction of the school department, though, and the school committee, they, they kind of put in their capital plan what they think the needs are, and over the last ten years, the needs have been a new high school, a new elementary school, a new heating system, new floors, so a lot of stuff does go into the school system, but, um, a few things that have popped up that I just want to make mention of is, there's been concern about health concerns in the building, um, I know it's been tested a couple, at least a couple times in the last several, or, let's say, within the last six to eight months, and there have not been issues, I know it's being tested again because of concerns, um, and that we will continue to, um, continue to make sure that, ensure that it's a safe building, but, um, I think we're happy to see people pushing to see what we can do to improve that asset of the town, um, it's just a long, difficult process, and, and really, maybe some, uh, bigger planning than just a middle school, as we've talked about over the last several years, in terms of other buildings being involved in it, so, um, I'm sure there'll be further discussion on it in the upcoming weeks. Any, I don't know if anyone had anything to add?
We'll put it.
Okay, thank you, Trish.
Capital plan, they were due, uh, November eighteenth, this is the second year of the new process I implemented last year, um, I have over forty requests for FY thirteen plus the building capital plan, um, and have been spending pretty much all of my time the last week and a half doing that, because operating budget's due Friday, um, there's been a few missing pieces keeping me from completing it, hopefully, I'll get to them by Thursday, um, I met with the chairman, there's a new chairman of the capital planning committee this year, Jamie Gilmore, Eric Pennehoek did great work the last several years, so, um, Jamie is now, uh, in the loop on what's happening, and, um, he'll receive that as well as advisory committee, and the capital planning will receive that with the operating budget, um, right after the first of the year, just, actually, I think it's December thirtieth. Legislative changes to health insurance, um, I think as we move into the budget season, the board, we'll, we'll start to get inquiries from folks about the changes that the legislature made last year on health insurance, um, allowing the town to implement certain changes in health insurance for employees, uh, in retirees, if, after doing some due diligence, um, and meeting with employees and, um, public employee groups, uh, we are in, able to get those through negotiation, uh, a number of towns in the area are moving forward on this, I believe Pembroke voted last night to, um, move forward with, um, formally adopting this section of the law that allows the board to invoke any changes if agreement isn't reached with a certain period of time, I've scheduled an insurance advisory committee meeting for, um, December seventh or eighth, to meet with employees on an informal basis, um, just to recap, um, what the plan is for the town, is to meet informally with all the employee unions and affected employees, uh, to see if we can negotiate some changes in, in healthcare design, and should that fail, then I'll be before the board, asking them to adopt this section of the new statute that allows us to implement. Right now, I've been working with Jane on the health insurance budget, and as you can imagine, it's very difficult to project what that FY thirteen number's going to be right now, uh, because we don't know if we'll be able to achieve any savings here, so, potentially, there are significant savings, um, but again, I just, in, in case folks have questions, and I know there's been questions in the past, uh, we are aware of it, and we're working toward, uh, working cooperatively with employees and retirees on, on this option that the legislature's given. Any questions on that? Okay, and, um, last thing which the board's aware of, and we voted in executive session, and now can be made public, is, um, that the police union and the town have ratified a new four-year contract, the police have been working without a union contract since June thirtieth of two thousand nine, the contract covers fiscal years FY ten through thirteen, and follows the patent that's been established for the three other contracts settled on the town side, this settlement is for zero percent, a zero percent, two percent, and two percent, and, um, the new agreement continues to recognize, uh, present officers on the force for their education, um, it substantially changes educational incentives for any new police officers coming in, and it won't be a percentage of their salary like the Quinn bill is now, um, but would be a flat dollar amount, um, we also, and from the management side, achieve some management rights in terms of streamlining time off, and, um, I just want to take a moment to really commend, um, the police union in finally coming together and negotiating informally with me, uh, even though we had started the formal path before the Joint Labor Management Committee for, uh, a decision that would be out of the hands of both the town and the union, and, um, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that they came out of that and the individuals I work with it, um, so given that, that union contract is now settled, and we know what the cost implications are, um, both retro and going forward, is, we can move forward on staffing, uh, there's been for the last several years, two funded but unfilled police officer positions, the board supported and was approved for two additional police officer positions in the override, and we're also in a position, I, I think, to hire some permanent intermittent officers, so, um, on January eleventh, there will be a police panel convened to select up to four officers and up to six permanent intermittent police officers, that search panel will consist of the police, chief of police of Chelsea, the chief of police of Lowell, the town manager in Milton, who was the former chief of police, chief Stewart, and myself, and, um, you ask about the Chelsea and Lowell police chiefs, and I went to the Kennedy School with them, and that's how I got them on the hook, so, um, so I expect this to be a similar search to the other searches we've already conducted for sergeant promotion and firefighter, and that it will be very different than, I think, um, the community or the department seen before, um, but if you're, I'll give you those dates and you're certain to sit in, we have the lists already from civil service, and the police department's in the process of doing background checks of everybody right now, and that is all I have.
Well, I think, uh, one other thing is, is in order, not only does the police department and, and the people involved in the negotiations there, you know, deserve the applause, but so do you, you put so many hours into this project, it's been, what, two years, two plus years of work?
And the litigations with John and all the grievances and stuff like that.
Yes, and, uh, you know, kudos to you for the hard work and the persistence and, and, and the dedication to getting it right, and, uh, I thank you for doing it, and it's a great accomplishment for both sides, so, thank you very much. Move on to item number eleven, other business. Mr. Murray?
I have two, two pieces of other business, uh, it was brought to my attention, I admit I'd noticed it myself, but I didn't put it all together, but it was brought to my attention, actually, by Tom here at the audience, there seems to be an increase in graffiti around town, uh, purple dinosaur at the, uh, bridge here by, uh, uh, the train, uh, up by Dad's place on Hathley, uh, one of the buildings up in North Situate behind where the, the, uh, old train station is, and, uh, like I said, I, I noticed some of them, but I hadn't put it together, but collectively, you know, Tom, I think you're right, it seems to have been increasing, and I just wanted to bring that to Tricia's attention and, and see if something could be perhaps done about that, so, thank you, Tom. The second thing is, is we just got a piece of paper, and I, I don't anticipate we've all read it yet, but about a potential change to mooring rules and regulations that was discussed by Waterways and meets the approval of Mark Patterson.
Yep.
And, uh, I think I mentioned it once before, um, but it has to deal with, uh, there was a communications error back in twenty-ten, and some people were removed from the mooring waiting list, and just again, for disclosure, this does not, if, I have a mooring in Situate, but this does not affect me whatsoever, I'm just reporting as a liaison to Waterways, there are some people that were removed from the mooring list in twenty-ten, and, and they came and, and discussed with Waterways, um, that there were some communications issues with that, so there's a one, a one-time only dealing with those, with those situations to rectify that, but then there's also a potential bylaw change to the mooring rules and regulations, which I think we would have to approve at some point, so I believe this is going to be on our agenda at some point, so, just wanted to draw your attention to it in here, these are all very well thought out and discussed, and again, supported by Waterways and supported by Mark Patterson, the harbor master.
Great. Great, thank you.
Sure, um, well, it's the holidays, so I'd like to encourage everybody in TV land to shop Situate and, you know, if you're gonna be looking to buy any items for the holidays, for Christmas and for whatnot, um, consider shopping here in the town. If you're looking to buy a Christmas tree, you know, consider going to the various vendors who are selling trees here in the town. Go to North Situate, there are a lot of businesses that are up there, um, and of course, Front Street. Uh, this Friday, they're gonna be having, um, first Friday, they're having caroling, um, it's kind of like a really festive time and it's kicking off the weekend, uh, that should be a fun-filled weekend, so I'd, again, just try to implore everybody to think that and, um, enjoy it. So it's a tough time of year because everybody's always concerned about the, um, shopping and getting everything done, but you know, there's a point in time where you gotta take a step back and just take it in and get, get through it and enjoy it, though, because it's a good time, a fun time, especially with kids. Um, the second item deals with down Coal Parkway and I guess, I was talking to Sean earlier today about it and I, I have to tell you, I go bananas when I'm driving down on Coal Parkway and I see a ton of docks littered right in front of the Coal Parkway, or the Walkway. I just, I, I can't, I'm sitting here going, and, and Tricia, this isn't you, but I'm thinking, you know, is there some way that Wa, you know, Mark Patterson can like move these docks and put them somewhere other than putting them directly in front of the view? I mean, it's kind of like building a wall in front of your view, I mean, it's like having a house on a mountain or having your house on the ocean and saying, guess what, I'm not gonna put any windows facing that way and I'm like, it's crazy. I, I know there's a cost factor, but a part of me seems to think that, you know, maybe the cost should be to move it in another portion of Coal Parkway, put it somewhere, but I, I just drove by there with my kids on Sunday and I said, you gotta be kidding me, it's just, can we put it over at the Marine Center, can we put it in some other location? Have we looked into it? I know Mark comes in here every time and says, well, there's a cost and just lets it go at that, but I'm gonna tell you, the next time I see him in here, I'm gonna tell him, find another location, 'cause I, I think we really need to. You, you take the best location in the town, one of the best locations in Town Harbor and you can't say, people go walking there, they smell because of the, um, drying off of all the crustaceans and again, it's just crazy, it baffles me. I mean, we could put it over at the Marine Center, even if it's a small location, stick it there, you know, there are boats stored there, so who cares? The boats aren't gonna care about the docks, they're not gonna be looking at the ocean, so, you know, to me, I, I just think that this is something that we need to begin to kind of retrain and refocus, so I'm venting, I'm, I'm getting off my soapbox, but, um, I just think we need to address it in the future. That's it.
Thank you, John. Sean?
Well, I was just, John had spoken to me about it earlier and it wouldn't be all that difficult if you can find a spot, because as the crane's lifting them out, just put them right on a flatbed, deck them, you just need a crane or forklift at the other end. If it's at the transfer station, if they can stack them there, couldn't agree more with you, John. And they're there from now till, till May, so it's, you know, six months out of the year. Again, it's just a little bit of cost.
The MBTA lot?
Yeah, they're not speaking, is it, John, is it full?
Could I just follow up on that as part of the discussion?
It's a lot full, I think.
Yeah, Rick. Yeah, uh, I, I agree with John on that, um, it can't go over to the Marine Park because there is boat storage there and that's all built into the lease in terms of what they are going to be using and they're, and they are full up. I agree completely with the sentiment expressed by you and Sean. Some things that we've raised up and I would like to see again considered would be, you know, Sean, you said put them on a flatbed truck, is there some space down at the transfer station?
If there is, I-
If there is, for some of the spots, but I agree, it's one of the, you know, most used spots and because it's winter time, it is, people still do park their cars, look out for people go walking and, uh, it's essentially half the year, so I, I think this would be good.
My kids brought it up the other day, brought it through there, so it's, it's definitely, I mean-
Wouldn't make sense. We have discussed it, um, and some of the things are cost, but I think this is something that we should build into budgets if it is cost. Um, that would be Waterways Enterprise Fund budget, certainly related to that. Um, we thought about, for example, putting them down at, uh, Peggy Beach Parking Lot, but of course floats float and Peggy Beach Parking Lot floods, so that would be problematic. Um, but, you know, transfer station or, or some areas like that, I think it would be great to do.
Of course. I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, I have a couple quick things. I'll start off with the lease festive, but, uh, Situate Little League registration is Saturday at, um, nine to twelve at, where is it?
The Marine Center, isn't it?
Yeah, the Maritime Center.
Maritime Center.
Yeah, not at the, uh, not at the Knights, it's at the Maritime Center, so from nine to twelve, um, go there and sign up for our next season. Um, another quick thing is, uh, on Saturday at ten o'clock, it's my understanding that Santa is gonna be coming to town. I, I believe he's gonna be hopping a boat and, uh, and coming down to Front Street around ten o'clock and passing on, uh, joy and, and holiday favors to everybody. There'll be a party after that at the community center, AKA Pier Forty-four, and there'll be stuff, freaky stuff for the kids to do and photographs of Santa and all that sort of stuff. So, uh, don't miss it, it's usually a great turnout, I think, does a fire truck come down and?
I, you'd have to ask Santa that.
Typically, he come, fire truck picks up Santa, does a quick loop around and, um-
I know Santa looks forward to it every year and I talked to him the other day and he looking, really looking forward to it this year.
Good, well, it's good to have Santa back. Um, one last thing is, uh, uh, Community Christmas, um, and this is on both ends of Community Christmas. It's a great organization in the town, they do so much good in a short period of time and if you're watching, A, if you know somebody in need, um, please get in touch with Community Christmas, a lot of times people won't come out and ask for it, but, um, this, this is exactly what Community Christmas is here for. Um, they can contact Susan Fitton and she is the one that's headed up for years and she does a wonderful job. And B, if you want to help with Community Christmas, they're always looking for volunteers to help, um, purchase and wrap and do all sorts of things that, that they do. So in either case, um, you can get in touch with Susan Fitton, um, or any other board members on Community Christmas and donate your time and, um, and thoughts, so, um, thank you for the attention of that. Anything else? Then we'll move on to correspondence, which I don't think there are any, so we'll skip that and go to number thirteen, which is approval of a minutes.
Move that the board's selectmen vote to accept the regular session, executive session minutes of November fifteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Second. Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was some heads. Four, nothing. And, um, now, item number fourteen, we're gonna move into executive session to talk about labor, labor negotiations, so we will be, uh, logging off and we will not be coming back into, um, regular session. So thank you all and we are meeting next Tuesday.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Danny? Yes. Yes.
Yes.[1737.88]